We're gonna go ahead and call this, uh, special meeting to order. Have a roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Ellis?
Here.
Counselor Day?
Here.
Counselor Stokes?
Here.
Counselor Holloway?
Here.
We have a call.
Okay. Uh, at this time, do I have a motion to allow Counselors Holloway and Harris to participate remotely?
So moved.
I'll second it. Is there, uh, oh, um, Counselor Holloway and then Counselor Harris, can you state where you're conducting the meeting from and the reason you're asking to participate remotely?
Yes, uh, home, I'm at the supervision.
Okay, uh, Counselor Harris?
Conducting from my home. Uh, I'm a victim of a, a multitasking breakdown.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right, here none, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yeah.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Recording in progress.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, just.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just admit that.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. All right, uh, at this time, um.
Oh, excuse me, hold on. I just realized we were voting on us, right? Okay, I.
Correct, that's why I said five to zero. I, I, I took away your vote.
Okay, thank you. I skipped my mind to, to the back, I apologize.
It's all right. Um, uh, we have to do a quick public statement, um, at the conclusion of the closed meeting during the special meeting on Monday, January thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. The required certification was not done. At this time, do I have a motion certifying that the only matters described in the notice, uh, for that closed meeting on Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five were discussed?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second it. Uh, seeing no discussion, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Excuse me, so what, what are we certifying? I mean, we are, are we?
We're certifying Monday.
Close.
Certify that Monday, we only.
Talked about the matters that were discussed in the closed session on Monday.
Yeah.
Right, so I'm saying, so this certification is, uh, be a certification to come out of close?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, got you, thank you.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, at this time, is there a motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven eleven A one to discuss and consider personnel matters, including board and commission appointments, Hopewell Redevelopment Housing Authority, Planning Commission, Healthy Families, Community Policy and Management Team, and discussion, consideration, and interview of prospective candidates for employment? Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven eleven A twenty-nine, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidder, of bidders, offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, and Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven eleven A seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, followed by an open session to discuss the repeal of the recently adopted conflict of interest policy, and to the extent such discussion will be aided thereby.
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yeah.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. I'm here going to come out of a closed meeting. Do I have a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
All right, second it. Roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yeah.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Uh, certification, please.
Certification pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one two D, where only public business matters one lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and two identified in closed meeting motion discussed in closed meeting. Mayor Parton?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes. Recording in progress.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Uh, moving on to our work session, uh, Mr. Ward.
I thought we, I thought we had to vote on the previous matters first.
No, we have them right there in the regular, um, business.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I forget, I forget, sorry, sorry.
It's all right.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, new council members, welcome. Uh, tonight's work session, uh, regards a zoning amendment request to add the use of churches to the R one A, uh, low medium density residential district. The applicant for this is Restored Hope Church of the Nazarene. R one A is a residential zoning district that, uh, covers parts of wards four, five, and seven, currently does not allow churches, and of course, the request is to add churches as an allowable use. And, uh, this is a work session, so there were, uh, no requirements that were required to be sent out for this presentation. Uh, just as a reminder, adding a use to a district means that you're allowing that use throughout the entire district. It's not restricted to certain properties. And here in this map, you can see that within the yellow box is generally where the R one A is located. Churches are an allowable use in, in all other residential districts in the city of Hopewell except for R one A and the R one. Uh, they're both the low-density districts. Churches are allowable in all of our commercial districts as well. Did some background research as to, to see as to why, uh, churches were excluded from R one or R one A and was not able to find any compelling evidence as to any reason why it's been left out. And in fact, uh, churches have existed in the R one A for sixty-plus years. There's, uh, this church here that is the applicant existed, uh, at their location, uh, for sixty-some years. And, uh, there's a Baptist church that's also located in R one A that has been there for a similar length of time. So this is the location here, uh, on, shown on this map as to where the Church of the Nazarene was located previously. It burned down in two thousand and nineteen. It was a total loss. And, uh, it's taken them, uh, quite a few years to get, uh, fundraise the money and everything to, to get for rebuilding, but when they came back in, they realized church is not allowable use. So, uh, from a planning standpoint, we thought that the best, uh, course of action to move forward was just to add the use to the district. Uh, again, here you can see, uh, on the left, that is the R one A area, and on the right, those are all the areas that, uh, permit churches as an allowable use. So staff recommends approval of the request to add churches to Section A of Article three dash A residential, excuse, yes, uh, three dash A residential low-density district as an allowable use. Uh, we did receive one public comment during the Planning Commission public hearing, and that, uh, was a comment in favor of, uh, approving the addition of the use. And Planning Commission, uh, recommends approval of the request. They voted four zero at their public hearing held on December fifth. This is a work session, so not asking for any action this evening, but I am available for any questions if you have any.
Have any questions for Mr. Ward? Uh, seeing no lights? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move right into our, uh, open meeting. Uh, is there a motion to amend the agenda to include an R six? Uh, that was inadvertently left off to end all litigation against Counselor Ronnie Ellis?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Seeing no lights for discussion, roll call, please. Uh, Counselor Day?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Uh.
So.
Yeah. Recuse me.
Okay. Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
I didn't know we had litigation. Is this from last year? No.
Counselor Holloway?
No.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes four to two.
Okay. And, uh, just to make sure that we have enough time, do I have a motion to extend the meeting until we complete R six?
So moved.
And I'll second it. Seeing no lights for discussion, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
No.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
You.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay. Uh, R one, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Uh, this is the fastest I've been, uh, on a R item in the two years I've been here.
Don't get used to it.
Tonight, I'm before you, um, to present to some the first and, and to others for the second time, uh, with revisions, the City of Hopewell draft strategic economic development plan. Just a little bit of a background, um, early in two thousand and twenty-four, the City of Hopewell, um, council had a retreat, and in this retreat, members of the council identified three crucial areas of the city's health and sustainability, and these areas were establishing a comprehensive financial infrastructure and management, um, developing an economic strategic plan that advances the city's economic stability, diversity, and growth, and then to develop an integrated public safety approach to enhance the lives and safety of all the city residences. So, um, it was in, uh, early summer that, um, this council, uh, that was previously, uh, seated in June of two thousand and twenty-four, tasked the, uh, Economic Development Department, which I'm the director of, um, to coordinate between the Hopewell Economic Development Authority and the Hopewell City Council to prepare an update to the strategic economic development plan that had been previously updated in two thousand and fourteen. So I worked very closely with the designated members of city council, which were the previous Vice Mayor Gore and, um, uh, representative, uh, councilperson, um, Rita Joyner, and then I also worked with the Economic Development Authority, uh, Susan Benton at the time, and John Alites, and together we rolled up our sleeves and we went through multiple hours of work and multiple sessions to, um, present to you this document, uh, which was most recently updated in November of two thousand and twenty-four. Now, I thought that, um, since we had extra time tonight, I would read every single word of this document, but it is, uh, four thousand four hundred and thirty-six words, so I will, I will spare the, the reading tonight. But, uh, what I would really, really like to do, and this is very important, um, on February the sixth, we are having an Economic Development Summit here in the city at the John Randall Foundation. Each one of you in the next few days will receive an invitation to that summit, and, uh, it's something that I've been working on with Mr. Albert Bob, and, um, and he has helped me to prepare an outline for that. What would really, really be fantastic is before this Economic Development Summit on February sixth, that, uh, this body would take the time to go through this, um, strategic plan and let me know, uh, as the point person for coordinate this, if there's anything in this plan that, that they disagree with, or anything in this plan that they think, um, needs to be modified or changed, because it would really be great if we could go into that Economic Development Summit on February the sixth with a, a plan that has been adopted by council, so we have clear direction on the strategic things that we are doing every day as we look at properties to acquire, as, as I bring to you opportunities for investment and for enhancements in the city, and, uh, incentives and, uh, things to that nature. And, uh, so, um, I will be coming back to you on, um, January the twenty-eighth, uh, in regular session unless there's a polar vortex or some other type of event that prevents us from meeting, and I'll be ax, asking for action at, at, at that time. But I really, really would like for council to, uh, take the time to go through this fourteen-page document. We've broken it down into areas of the city, strategic areas of the city, places that we can, um, uh, have an influence and, and, and make a change to set the table, so to speak, for economic growth and, and, and economic activity. The things that we can do as, as a, as a public body and in partnership with, uh, with developers and, um, and investors alike. There has been some incredible movement just in the last two months. Uh, commercial properties that were on the market for, um, some time have now gone under contract. Residential properties, I'm talking to residential brokers, and they've seen an uptick just over the, the holidays. Properties that have been listed since August of last year are now under contract for full, uh, full price, and some have multiple offers on them. So there's no doubt that, that change is afoot in, in the marketplace, and, um, we want to be ready to capitalize on that change. Uh, there's an air of optimism. It's a new year, it's a new day, and I think there's some real opportunities. So I will pause for some, um, questions about the structure of this document, or any specific questions you may have.
Are there any questions from members of council? Hearing none? Okay, all right.
Thank you so much. I look forward to coming back and seeing you in a couple of weeks.
Week and a half now.
A week and a half now. Thank you so much.
All right, moving on to R two, Dr. Mankur.
Mr. Mayor, um, Vice Mayor, and member of city and council, tonight I am before you to request the approval of the forensic audit services. On November the nineteenth, uh, the, the previous city council directed the city manager to, um, list the RFP for services for forensic audit services. Uh, we have, uh, been through that process and we have selected a vendor, and so now staff is requesting that this council, we recommend that city council approve the forensic audit services and direct the city manager to enter into a contract on behalf of the city and approve the cost up to eighty-four thousand dollars. Any excessive funds that are not used will be returned back to, um, the city coffers, um, and those dollars will come from, uh, any salary savings that we, um, will have, and that presentation of salary savings will be at the Finance Committee meeting on, uh, February twenty-first. I'm sorry, January twenty-first, which is next Tuesday. I yield floor back to the mayor to open the floor for discussion.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the forensic audit services and to direct the city manager to enter into contract on behalf of the city of Hopewell, uh, with approving the cost up to eighty-four thousand dollars?
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Day. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
No.
I didn't hear you, Counsel Holloway.
I said no.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
You.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay, uh, moving on to R three, uh, Ms. Jordan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Excuse me, I'm here to discuss, um, the possibility and financial implications as of moving the personal property due date from March fifteenth to March seventh. The Hopewell Code Section thirty-four dash forty-four, the treasurer's statement states that the city's treasurer shall, shall at least fifteen days before any penalty attaches for non-payment of taxes under this article, mail the statement showing the nu, total number of taxes due for the current year by public service corporations or on tangible pro, personal property other than machinery and tools to such taxpayers. The bills were mailed out, uh, I believe, January third by the treasurer's office. In history, um, previously, it was a courtesy that the city of Hopewell sent the bills out two months in advance to the citizens. However, the code for Hopewell does not state that it's a requirement. The city is not in non-compliance. Pushing that due date back for the city possibly prevents us from receiving revenue in more timely fashion, which could, which could, um, cause us to not being able to complete capital projects, and we might be in another freeze as we were earlier this year. Because, uh, again, the city's personal property is only once a year, it's not twice a year, as well as the real estate is twice a, uh, twice a year. So we're really, December was the last due date, and now we're waiting from December all the way until March to be able to receive revenues until the season.
Okay.
My recommendation would be to not push the due date, but it's ultimately council decision.
Could you repeat that?
So my recommendation as a CFO for the city of Hopewell would be to not push the due date back, to leave it at, um, February fifteenth, but the ultimate decision is up to council, of course.
Well, we can still leave it at the, the date, uh, fifteenth, but just waive the penalties, the interest, and fee and everything all the way to March seventh.
Yes, and if council does decide to do that, the state code does require that you do a resolution to the treasurer.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, so if you, if council agrees to waiving the, the penalty, we'll have the resolution at the next, um, regular meeting for a vote.
Okay, all right. Uh, is there a motion to, uh, waive all penalties, fees, and interest for personal property taxes until March seventh, two thousand and twenty-five?
So moved.
All right, I'll second, uh, uh, Counselor Stokes. Uh, motion was made by Counselor Harrison, seconded by Counselor Stokes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to, uh, R four, uh, the repeal of the recently adopted Conflict of Interest Policy Act. Um, I had a really good conversation with, uh, Counselor Harris about this item, and, um, I think we came to an idea, uh, that I think is actually going to be, uh, more beneficial, uh, for the city, and, uh, that is to invite the, uh, Virginia Conflict Advisory, Virginia Conflict of Interest Advisory Council, uh, to a work session. So then that way, all members on city council can get training, ask questions. Uh, it'd also be a good informational, uh, session for the public as well. And then to, and another, um, separate action, uh, to then have the Ethics Committee, uh, work on converting the existing conflict of interest policy over into a, uh, council code of ethics, uh, since the AG has struck down, um, that we can't have our own separate conflict of interest policy. Uh, so is there a motion to, uh, invite the Virginia Conflict of Interest Advisory Council to a training and work session, uh, in February?
So moved.
Okay. Uh, motion's been made by Counselor Stokes and seconded by Counselor Harris. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. And is there a motion to charge the Ethics Committee to work on converting the existing conflict of interest policy to a council code of ethics?
So moved.
I'll second. You guys are on fire today. Uh, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner.
We're doing what now? With, with, with the?
We're charging the Ethics Committee to work on converting the existing conflict of interest policy over to a council code of ethics. Oh, I'm sorry, did you allow?
Is it working?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you gotta hold it.
Oh.
There you go. Uh, Counselor Ellis?
So, I, I think, uh, Counselor Holloway, uh, was asking, so you want to move what, what we have now to a conflict of interest policy?
No, we're taking the cost of turning it into a code of ethics.
Code of ethics. Can we just get rid of the, the policy now and then work on a code of ethics?
Uh, I mean, I think it's going to end up, it, it will get rid of itself once we adopt the code of ethics.
Right, so let's, let's do first step and then go to that.
Okay, um. Okay, is that all right with council? I mean, to do a friendly amendment?
Not all in favor of doing the code of ethics, of course. I, 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 I wish we'd have done it four years ago, but, um.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, what are you asking to do?
Hold on, uh, Mr. Harris, did you try to say something?
I would like to say that the, the, the council code of ethics will place this code that we have now. Uh, I, you know, I, I think that, you know, in the interest of, you know, the fact that we do have other, uh, concerns in regards to the, the, the conflict of interest, I think that what we are doing in regards to bringing in individuals to help train, that will help replace what it is that we have placed now. Oh, I, I don't see need to be having other kind of.
Why, why are we replacing the, the, the?
Counselor Holloway, let's let Mr. Harris finish.
But I just don't see, I, I, what it is that we have just talked about in regards to having individuals to come in a work session, right? And what we would have is guidelines in regards to conflict. Because initially, getting rid of it, okay, was not something that was, or something that all of council was in favor. But, uh, all of council is in favor of bringing the work session and making this thing viable for everybody. That's, that's my thought.
Okay, uh, Counsel Holloway?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yeah, my, my, I, I, I got quite a bit, uh, to discuss about this matter. I think it is. I've, I've had this conversation before. I, I don't even understand why we are now at the place where we're fighting to replace it. Um, as I had, uh, set up interview time and try to get some clear understanding of the direction. Um, as I had uh set up interview time and tried to get some clear understanding of the direction the city was going, I was under the understanding and the impression, hearing counselors, uh even with the ordinance and the uh resolution that we had, that council council believed that the situations that the city is facing was, everybody said indeed in fact, a conflict, but then was requesting to uh repeal the Conflict of Interest and also to stop the current litigation at place, um which of course I highly voted against. I I even had statements, evidence that I said I were gonna release to the to the public, whereas in, I I feel that there's a state uh state of privilege in place and also recorded conversations where people, uh counselors had even protect themselves to say that they were standing in place to be a Uncle Tom. I I think that the direction that the city is going with this and the and the things that are happening right now regarding this is literally a scary place. Because there is indeed in fact right now Conflict of Interest. Um, it's been brought up and raised, the question of how uh we can have a city counselor being the boss to the city manager and also working for the city manager. These things are are of great concern because the whole purpose of having a Conflict of Interest Act in place is to eliminate those types of conflicts. And we put an order in place and there was Attorney General opinion, but it doesn't make our ordinance mute as it has been stated over and over again. But I would urge that council uh would take consideration in front of the people uh that ideally because you feel privileged to do so, that nobody should be able to be excused in a space if we've all agreed that it is indeed a uh a Conflict as to why we would go forward and stop the decisions of litigations in court and also repeal any decision or change anything that our resolution exactly lines up with the state code. And 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 those things are specific. But that's my statement as of right now until I release all of these recordings. I digress.
Okay. Alright. Is there any other comments or concerns? Okay, uh, hearing none. Uh, the motion on the floor is to charge the Ethics Committee to work on converting the existing Conflict of Interest Policy over onto a council code of ethics. Roll call please.
Mayor pardon?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
No.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
You.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay, uh, moving on to R five, Mr. Ward.
Uh, good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, once again. Um, the department has received a uh council request to investigate specific uses in uh throughout the city uh in various zoning districts. And state code, uh according to fifteen point two dash twenty-two eighty-six, there's um one of three ways to do that. Um, one would be a citizen submits a petition, which would be a zoning amendment request application. Uh, planning commission can initiate uh uh staff to look into amending an ordinance. And council can initiate uh staff to look into amending the ordinance. So, uh, that's why uh this is on here this evening as an R five item, uh, is that a particular counselor cannot initiate uh staff review, but you as a body can. So, uh, in being compliant with state code, uh, this resolution is before you for consideration. And the specific use in question is automotive-related uses. Staff will, once initiated or if initiated, staff will investigate those types of uses around the city. Uh, any sort of performance standards that we either have or don't have, um, that you may be interested in, that we can potentially put in place for these uses. And anything else that you you as a body would like us to look into related to automotive uses. That's basically what this resolution is about, and I'm available for any questions if you have.
Uh, Vice Mayor Joyner? I just saw your hand move.
Absolutely, well, I I've had in the in um, I was the, I was the counselor, I'm the counselor that made the request. And I can tell you that it had to do with, as I look around the city, the proliferation of automotive repair that you can see at the very, you know, sales, repair, storage, I'm looking, I think about City Point Road. Down City Point Road, I mean, there's a a car, used car lot or repair place. You know, just, there's just a proliferation of them and they're just popping up everywhere. And I just think it would be, it's in the best interest of the city to really take a look at this. I'm not against car repair places or car sales places, that kind of thing. But I think that a proliferation of them in one section is really not where we need to be going. Um, I think it's it's a real problem throughout the city. And so I just asked, was there any way that we could sort of control this in some way? And I do know that we are looking at zoning ordinance uh amendments to our current zoning ordinance um regs out there now. And uh, but that's gonna be a couple of years from now before it's all all set in stone. And I felt like, you know, I went to them and said, is there any way we could do this, and they came up with this, which I'm very appreciative of. And so I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that I was the counselor behind this.
Yeah, and I also think it's a good idea too. I go running, you know, all throughout the city, different neighborhoods, and um, you know, when I go down B Village, uh seven, eight, nine, tenth street, I mean, as tight as what they are, and you have uh some houses that are uh working on vehicles out in the street and then leaving them out in the street for days upon weeks. Yeah, I think that this, you know, would be something really good that we could look at, um, you know, doing. And, you know, seeing what, you know, staff can come up with to help. And I think it, you know, would end up helping, one, the appearance, but also, you know, overall functionality of our neighborhoods. So is there a motion uh to approve the resolution to initiate a zoning ordinance amendment to review the zoning regulations uh regarding motor vehicle usage?
So move.
Okay, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by uh Counselor Day. Is there any discussion? See, uh, uh, Counselor Stokes?
Um, I my concern is, um, you all presenting this tonight. I would have liked to have more time to discuss this. Can you be more specific in what your goals are with this?
Yeah, all there, all that we're charging staff to do is to develop an ordinance at which they come back to us and then they'll do like a work session, review it with us, we give them input, markups and changes, and then we end up voting on something.
So this resolution is just to allow them to just begin to do do the work?
Yeah, and if you have input, you can also email it over to um Mr. Ward as well.
Yeah, well, I would have had input if I had it before tonight. Um, and also would have liked an opportunity to share it with members um of the Ward's sixth community and see if they had any input into this also, because it just seems that you you keep mentioning um different areas of the city, and different areas of the city should have just as much input into this resolution as.
Oh, there'll be public comment periods.
I understand.
Just to be clear, we're not, this is not amending the ordinance at all just yet. This is just directing staff to research the issue, come up with some options and then bring it back to you all at a later date so that um you can make a decision on if and how you want to amend the ordinance. That will be at a later time.
Yeah, 'cause this is written somewhat generic.
It's it's, it can be a bit confusing.
It's not confusing, it's generic.
It's um, it's a little wordy when really all it's doing is just directing staff to look into the issue, is really what it all means.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Roll call please.
Mayor pardon?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
You.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, and then the last item on the agenda is to uh end all litigation against Counselor Ronnie Ellis. Is there a motion to end all and withdraw from uh litigation, legal actions, lawsuits, demurs and appeal petitions against uh Counselor Ronnie Ellis?
So move. I'll second that.
Alright, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Holloway and then Counselor Stokes?
Uh, a- again, I I'd like to appeal to the uh citizens, especially uh with this matter. This is a very heavy uh Conflict of Interest matter. And we're in the midst of litigation where litigation has been brought up against the city in regards to this conflict. And we have a court system who we um hopefully can put our trust uh in to make these type of decisions. I have had several conversations with several counselor members, um, and again, with the um concerns of Conflict of interest, and I think it is in the city's best interest um to continue to allow the um the city attorney um to go forth with the litigation so that the court can properly rule and do its investigations with the matter. Uh, like I said, I I hope that council would not be biased in this space. Uh, like I said, I I I plan on bringing whatever information to the public that is necessary so that the citizens can be updated on this matter. Uh, it, this is something that I clearly think that we probably should have had public hearing on and allow the citizens to come in and speak on the matter. Uh, like Counselor um Stokes had said previous, on a previous matter, to allow citizens in space to to speak on this. But I would hope um that where this bar is divided, that people would be fair and thought to give the courts its um its space to go forward as it has already been in litigation in regards to this heavy conflict. It is definitely a conflict, all seven counselors stated that it is definitely a conflict. So I I couldn't see why on earth uh we wouldn't allow the litigation to play out other than people's uh personal interest. And again, as I stated, um, from one counselor to say that you were only voting um with the other people because they were stated as being uh referred to themselves as a Uncle Tom. That's my statement as of right now on the matter.
Okay, Mr. Mayor Stokes?
Um, it was my understanding, I thought, from our city attorney that that we did not have any litigation moving forward. I would have liked to have seen everything brought to a closure, uh just as Counselor Holloway has stated, um, that it should have played out. And that's my statement.
Okay, uh, Mr. Harris, did you try to say something?
No, um, I did. Um, I just wanted to make sure that you are aware that the current state of the motion um is in, uh, well, it's incorrect for what you're attempting to accomplish because the city does not have any litigation pending against Mr. Ellis. Mr. Ellis has a lawsuit pending against the city.
Correct.
And the motion says the opposite, so I just want to make that clear.
So how should the motion read?
Um, the motion should um reflect that um the lawsuit that was, is pending is Mr. Ellis has against the city. And um, the city uh chooses to um dismiss the lawsuit, uh dismiss uh its interest in the lawsuit and not pursue it.
Okay, and that will include all appeals, demurs, everything that's been done?
If a lawsuit is dismissed, it's done.
Okay, I'm just, I'm making sure. Okay, so the motion, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Burton, the motion should read, the lawsuit brought before the city by Counselor Ronnie Ellis that is currently pending should the city is withdrawing its interest, is that right?
The city. I'm sorry, um, the the city is, has determined it is not interested in pursuing uh this case any longer, and so directs the city attorney to uh take the appropriate steps to have it dismissed. That's what the way it should read.
Okay, alright, so. Copy and paste that verb. For the record. Alright, so everyone understand the motion? You okay with the friendly amendment, Counselor Joyner and Counselor Day?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me, let me clarify that, it's clear that we don't have a suit against Mr. Ellis. That correct?
That's true.
That's correct.
Mr. Ellis has a suit against us.
Exactly.
Yes, that's correct.
Right.
Did he appeal? They didn't appeal? Didn't miss the time to.
So, does everyone?
The suit, the the suit in.
Counselor Holloway, so does everyone understand the motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, Counselor Holloway?
The suit, in fact, uh Attorney Burton is uh in the employment issue, uh, the right, the suit for the right to uh sit in as an employee under uh the city manager and to hold the seat on council. Uh, is the right to have that and and temporarily have, there's a tempore- uh temporary injunction given for that right until the case would come to full lit- litigation and the court is able to determine based upon factors presented, correct?
No.
No.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Apparently, in in sync with with Counselor uh Harris was requesting that the suit is for uh Counselor Ellis's right to continue employment uh with the City of Hopewell in his position as the uh battalion chief and also continue that employment while sitting on his seat a- as a counselor for the City of Hopewell, correct?
Well, the the case has not proceeded to the point where it has been or will, has been determined that Mr. Ellis had a ri- has a right.
No, 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 I wasn't asking that if he had a right, I was asking was that the basis of the suit? He he is suing for the right to be employed by the City of Hopewell while sitting in his seat on council.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Thank you.
Okay. So everyone understands the motion on the floor that Beverly uh has uh presented to us? Okay, roll call please.
Mayor pardon?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
No.
Counselor Holloway?
Absolutely not.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
You.
Motion passes four to two.
Okay, and also please note for the record that um Counselor Ellis recused himself from that discussion. Okay? Alright, seeing no other items, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Alright, ayes have it.